All right, I'll call the -- you ready? Call the meeting to order. We stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our roll call.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Present.
Trustee Keenley.
Present.
Trustee May.
Present.
Trustee Perns.
Present.
Supervisor Bussie.
Present. Okay, is there any public comment for our public out here? No, no public comment for our public. Okay. Current of the consent agenda, I will need a motion to approve the consent agenda, which is the authorization for payroll bills for the town fund, general assistance, road and road department, sewer, also for my social services, employment center, food pantry, youth services, adult and family counseling, transportation, financial, and passport reports. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
If there are any questions or anything, any questions you have in the unders card. Okay, if not, roll call.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenley.
Aye.
Trustee May.
Aye.
Trustee Perns.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye. Then we have the approval of the minutes for January 27, 2025, regular board meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
The second?
Second.
Okay, any questions or any discussion? Okay, if not, roll call.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenley.
Aye.
Trustee May.
Aye.
Trustee Perns.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye. There are no presentations today, so I would go to reports. Our assessor, please.
A couple of things of significance. I was on a Zoom call with the county assessor's office last Wednesday to discuss the upcoming triennial with their valuations department. I brought a couple of things to their attention I wanted looked at, and I also questioned them on what they were looking for to approve an appeal. And basically, they were very specific about a narrative and lots of pictures. So I brought that back to my staff so that if there are questions by our taxpayers, that certainly helps in solidifying their evidence for an appeal. Also, I questioned them as to when we will finally get our exemption applications, which in years past have been out as early as January. The response was possibly mid-March or mid-Spring. Now, the only problem with that is that with them coming out so late, and people have a tendency to not deal with them in a timely fashion, it puts a lot of pressure on my office because if those exemptions fall off, we end up doing a lot of certificates of error. And I am concerned that that's going to be the case again. I'm sure part of it, you know, has to be with the new system and the new SMART file that they're going to want us to use, but still, I can see that there will be some additional work that we're going to have to do. And here's the problem with that. You take an individual whose income, total household income, $16,000 on a senior freeze. If that freeze gets dropped and that person has a mortgage instead of a $700 tax bill, that person has a $4,000 tax bill. So there is such a lack of sensitivity that occurs when these things do not get out in a timely fashion. Anyhow, I've requested the county to make a presentation to the Cook County Township Assessors Association on what they want from us as far as valuations, and we'll see where it goes.
Okay, do you have any questions for the assessor?
No.
Okay, if not, clerk.
We had one FOIA request, which was asking for information about candidates who filed for the township election in April, and Administrator Monzo sent that information to them. And I certified the ballot for the election with the county. And I just put in there about the board approving money to Compass from our agency grant emergency fund from the 2024-2025 fund.
Any questions? Not, we'll get a supervisor's report. The first thing I'd let you know is we did two weeks ago have the, make a presentation between, before the Mount Prospect Village Board. It was Corey Dewey, our social services director, and myself. It was at their committee of the whole. We were basically the whole meeting, and it went for about an hour or so. And it was, I thought it was a very good, very good meeting. We were given the time to really explain what we do and how we do it, and we had tons of questions, and I think we were very, very well received. We are working on a presentation with Elk Grove Village. I was hoping it'd be tomorrow, but that did not work for them. Since I'm gone, most of March, we're looking to do it in April, and at which time I also would introduce the new supervisor. So we're hoping to do it then. There's a report that came out with the presentation. A, something similar to that will be used at the annual meeting as a summary of the year. But this report, which is, we use for the presentations, is available to all of you and also to the public. I would suggest if you don't have a copy of it, you get a copy from Izzy. It contains, how would you say, a review of most of all the areas, of everything that we covered more or less, with information charts as to trends in terms of demand and usage. I think it's a very good start to what I hope will be a continuing effort on our part to every year produce a, along with the financial report, produce a end-of-year review, which looks at, looks back at that year plus trends going back. And I think it's a very useful vehicle, particularly because it, we'd look good. So that's always a, always a positive. Reminder that the statements of economic interest will have to be submitted by May. You should be getting notification of that from the county in the not-too-distant future. It doesn't matter, I mean, the current board has to submit that. Any new board will not have to do theirs until next, next year. So this is for the current board needs to fill this out. So regardless of whether we win or not, we, this board needs to fill it out. Then you guys are going to have to take your, take the sexual harassment training. That will need to be in by March, and Izzy will be coming out with, with the information on that, in terms of that training. Everyone has to, has to take that. It's a state requirement. If I go then down to the adult and family counseling, Priya just passed her LPC exam and is, and is now LPC licensed. That's the, that's a licensed professional counselor. She is, there's two avenues you can go. It's the counselor path and the social worker path. Our social workers, our, our Luann, I mean, and, and Karina, they're social workers, while Priya, Carmen, and Jeanette are counselors. And, and you are a counselor, then you're a licensed professional counselor, and then you're a licensed, an LCPC. I'm not sure what exactly the, the terminology for that is. On the social workers, it's a different path. And when you, when, for instance, Luann is the highest, you could be a clinical social worker, and she has the ability to oversee counselors and social workers. The LCPC, which is the highest counselor level, cannot oversee social workers. So Luann is a, is in a position where she can supervise everyone. She is in a senior, a social worker position. We have now, Priya has reached her second level, and, and hopefully Carmen should take the exam for that. She has got the hours and everything. And Jeanette, I don't think is quite there yet. Luann and, I mean, Karina is now working for her second level on the social services side. So we're continuing to promote the educational process here and licensing. So congratulations to Priya. If you see her, please recognize that, because it's, it's not easy. You have to have so many hours, and then you have to take an exam. And like I said, there's several stages in terms of your licensing. The bad news, if you want to say bad, Jeanette has, is taking a leave of absence. The work balance is getting difficult for her between school and here. She was putting about three or four hours, which is not much, but at the same token, that's three or four clients, and it's, she's part-time. Anything she does is beneficial. It's not financially bad for us in any way, and she was providing additional services, and she's very knowledgeable. So she's taken a leave of absence. So we have right now, we have a part-time position which was approved by the board that we're looking, and we're interviewing two people, and we'll see what happens with Jeanette. And if, if it looks like this is going to be an extended period of time, or if she doesn't think she's going to come back, we will look to replace her as well, too. So we basically are one short right now, and we had authority to get another one, so we have basically two positions. We, one we have to fill, and we may have a second one we need to fill, too. That's going to put a little more pressure on the other, the four, but, but I, they're doing a really good job, and the waiting list is not getting longer. It's, it's come in a little bit here. On the, on the, on the travel, on the buses, we did, we did launch the EcoLane. That's the software for real-time management of the system. There are a few glitches right off the bat, but from other townships we talked to, that is, that is common, that we have to work through. Some, it doesn't, it's, we're not sure if, if it's, we're showing up a little bit late at some places, not dramatically, but that compounds over the day. We're not sure if that's the system, or if it's the drivers learning to use the system. So we'll continue to work on that, but it, it looks like it's going to be a real big plus for us in terms of managing the buses and the, and the schedules for, for our residents. We did have a full-time bus driver start last week. It's, it's Chris, what's Chris's last name again? Oh, Brunnhofer, and good, good German name. And he will, he is, he will be, he will be, he was hired to replace Kevin, who will be retiring in about two months. We will still then probably begin looking maybe for a part-time, but we'll come to the board before, before we pursue that. Another part-time would give us the ability to fill in behind someone when they're sick or when they're on vacation, and we don't have to cut back on the, on the routes that way. Plus, it would maybe give stability also to run routes on Saturday mornings, which is, would be advantageous. So right there, we've got a full-time to replace Kevin right now for two months. We've got an extra, and after that transition takes place, there may be discussion on, in terms of another part-time. Let's see, do I have anything else here? Yeah, we, Sue Allen talked about FOIAs. We did get another FOIA in the other day from a John Bombinek. He has sent this to multiple townships, 15 or 16 of them. He is a threat and corruption counselor, or consultant. He looks for situations where he believes there's corruption of some sort. Supposedly, at least, apparently, there was an issue in Mahomet Township, and so now he's, and that's, and I don't know the details of that, whether that's true or not, but because of that, he's now reaching out to multiple townships and demanding a dramatic amount of information, which unfortunately puts a lot of pressure on our staff, particularly when it's Izzy that has to do this. It's not something that anyone can do. So that, that's one of the issues with FOIAs. Usually, people come in and they're looking for something specific, like the one Sue Allen told you about, and that we can respond to. We have a certain amount of time, we can respond to it in that period of time, or ask for an extension. I'm not sure with this. And unfortunately, it came at a time when Izzy has been sick, pretty dramatically sick. She was back in the office today for the first time, but only was in for a short period of time. So she's going to have to get out of this, probably ask for an extension. But I just wanted you to know that there is a rather substantial FOIA out there demanding a whole slew of information about the township going back sometime, and that'll put a little bit of pressure on the staff here. We have the baler, I know if you're familiar, we have a baler now, which takes cardboard and compresses it, takes it all, compresses it. What this does is it saves us money in terms of trash pickup. Instead of having all this loose cardboard in the, in the big garbage bins, now we compress them and put them into bales, and then are able to dispose of them much easier and with a, a much lower cost. We're also looking at maybe, maybe expanding that and allowing a public drop-off of cardboard that we would bail as a recycling service, not as a broad range, but since we have it, maybe a, a cardboard recycling, but that's still to be considered. We are in the, currently in the process of exploring HVAC, contractors. We've had a relationship with Paragon in the past. Those are the ones that bought our township building. That has, business has been sold. The gentleman we used to work with, who we bought, bought it from us, and had, we had the contract with him for here, he is now gone, and we just felt, given the pricing that we were, that we had on the current contract, that we could maybe do better. So Romero was out looking at other contractors and getting bids. It's not something that we, or quotes, it's not something we have to bid out because it's a lower cost, but we are looking, we are looking to, to find a, potentially another contractor at a more reasonable cost. Those are just two examples, again, of how we're able to reduce money, reduce costs here and there, and all that adds up, and it has allowed us to reallocate that money to programs. So this expansion we've had in programs is the result of, I think, not just consolidation, but also, I think, very prudent managing of our, of our, our operations and our resources. And those are two, to the baler and the HVAC maintenance contract. One other thing that I do, well, one other thing to do is that I have taken out of our, will be taken out of our reserves. We will participate in a fire prevention program that Mount Prospect is pursuing in our unincorporated areas, the manufactured homes. The rural fire district did not have prevention programs. Mount Prospect is, Chief Dolan is pursuing a prevention program, and one of those is putting smoke detectors in the, in the manufactured homes and the facilities in our unincorporated area, and I will be using some of our reserves, maybe like $10,000, to support that, support that program. I think that's a, I think, I'm really glad to see they're moving forward with the prevention program, and these are our constituents, and I, I think if we can help in that regard, it's, it's very workable, and certainly, it's financially okay for us, or not a problem for us. The last thing is, I don't know if you saw the budget initiative by the governor. He is proposing, and I don't know how he's doing this, it's a budget initiative. I don't know if that's an executive decree that he puts out, or whether it's a bill that will follow up on this, but it's, he's pursuing an easier process for consolidating or eliminating townships. And what he would, what he's doing is he's reducing the level, the number of, he would be reducing the number of petitions, petition signatures required to put a referendum on the ballot from 10% to 5% of the registered voters. He's also allowing, would allow county boards to initiate a referendum. And, and he is, he is also, he is also proposing to eliminate the position of assessor in any township with less than 5,000 residents. The argument here is that this will, one, save the taxpayer money, two, it will increase the quality of the services provided, and, three, that'll reduce the number of government units overall. Only the third one is legitimate. It will reduce the number of units of government, but it will not reduce taxpayers' dollars to any degree, even just eliminating this. But then, in terms of replacing these services, it will cost more with either municipalities or counties, probably counties, who either, one, won't do the services, or, number two, will do them in a, in the manner that they do a lot of things. So I, I think that is, and then in terms of the improvement of services, I don't know where that's particularly come. This is a core competency for us with people that are professionals in this area, and we are local, local people doing local, local services to local people, and usually, that's more efficient and more, both financially as well as service-wise. So I'm not sure where this came from. There are some thoughts that it came from the fact that he has raised the budget significantly every year, even though there's claims that he's, that they're very financially responsible. And this may be one way to look like they're being financially responsible. And as we've discussed before, the townships are an easy target, because you can't, you can't go after some special districts like the schools, you can't go after municipalities, you can't go after townships, I mean, counties. So that leaves some special districts and the townships. We have a constituency which is rather unpolitically, is not politically strong, which is some of the lower-income, those with, that need assistance. And also, we, we are, we are, or we are, how would you say, government bodies that are, that are, the services we provide are not highly visible, except to those that really need it. So I don't know, just another step, another one of these issues where they're, where it's, I think it seems to me like an easy thing to say and an easy target. Now, whether they'll really aggressively move forward on this, I don't know, but Toy had a conference call today that Izzy and I ran, our presentation, and they're going to be actively working to, with the legislature to try to address this in a, in a, in a more educated, knowledgeable fashion. What we can do is we can, we can pass, we could pass a resolution. We could send letters along with our package of the services we provide, the presentation. We could send that to other elected officials. We could put information in the newsletter. We could put it on our website, as long as it's not a referendum that's on the ballot. Once it's a referendum on the ballot, then we have to be totally neutral. We can just provide facts, but we can't take, we can't position ourselves in terms of what we're recommending. Before that, we can. So that's something that needs to be discussed and looked at. If there is a resolution or a referendum and it fails, then it's four years before they can bring it back. And, and I would note out that every time there's been a referendum, and that's gone, to the, to the, to the constituents of township, it's failed every time. Except when you're doing the coterminus, where you're deciding whether you're, you're going to use the township, the village government or township, then it, you've had mixed results. But in terms of just eliminating, giving it to the county, it's never passed. But I want you guys to be aware of that, because it, it is something that I think we need to make sure, like we've been doing, that people realize what we do, and how valuable it is, and how inexpensive it is, and how good we are at it. And I, like I said, I think we're just sometimes an easy target in a little bit of a scapegoat. So that's system information on that. Let's see, I think that's, I think that's pretty well all the information I have right now. It's interesting, I don't have anything on construction to talk about. I mean, I think for the last, what is it, five, six years, we've talked about construction the whole time. So that's largely out of our budget for next year, which gives us a lot of room again. And we're building, the reserves are building back up, which I think is, is very, very, very positive. And I would say, too, that our move from the one bank to Bucy has been very advantageous for us. They have paid, their, what they pay on the accounts we have with them in terms of interest is substantially higher, and it's been a very financial windfall, a very significant financial windfall for us. So that decision that to move from the previous bank to this bank was a, a good move in terms of generating revenue for us, as well as they've been much more willing, much more interested in being involved in some of the things, some of our programs, and some of the, the projects that we're involved with. So I think that's, and those are things we just, you need, we need to pay attention to. I mean, same old, same old is not necessarily the, the way to proceed. I mean, the cost to be looking for ways that we can improve our services, but at the same time, being financially responsible and save money, too. Okay, if there's any, is there any questions for me?
Just a comment.
Yep.
The, on what you were talking about, the seniors would suffer, of course. The food pantry, if that was ever to go away, up to 1,400, 1,600 families, that would be a big, I don't know how the county would overtake that. The children, 57, 59, with what we've done, and the passports. I had a patient say today, say how happy they were with the township at $10, and we had 122, if I'm not mistaken?
Yeah.
That's a lot.
Yes, we had.
In one month.
One month.
It was 900 last year roughly, and then 122 in one month, so a lot of services that were.
I think, I think some, one way to look at is with the assessor's office as an example, is the county has two offices, two facilities, I think, where you can go in, and they don't really assist you. You can just submit your applications there. So once again, if the assessor's office went away and those services went to the county, the way they're doing it is self-serve. Come on in, we'll give you the application, you fill it out, and give it to us, and we'll just submit it. They don't provide the same quality of service in terms of really helping people do their comps, helping them fill out the applications, sending them in, following up on it, then resubmitting them to the board of reviews. That, that, two locations that who's, who can get to through all of Cook County, and then a much lower quality of service that's available. I think that's a very good example of what you would potentially be looking at. Would there be food pantries? Yes, but maybe there'd be five of them through all of Cook County, rather than one in each township. So, yeah. Anyway, that, so this is, just to make you aware of this, and it's, you know, I don't want to say the sky is falling, but I, I think this is probably one of the more significant, how would you say, efforts to, to potentially consolidate or abolish townships. Most of the other legislation was more pilot programs that didn't work, and I just, I don't know where this came from. I don't know why it popped up now, but obviously, the governor decided to use this with his budget for, you know, I think the reasons that I explained, but who knows? Okay, if there's no other questions, then we'll go on to correspondence.
We'll get a vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. Need a motion to approve the elected officials' reports?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any questions, any further discussion? If not, roll call.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenley.
Aye.
Trustee May.
Aye.
Trustee Perns.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye. Okay, correspondence, there's no correspondence. Old business, there's no old business. New business, we need, I'd like to get approval of a part-time food pantry employee. Last week, we had a part-time bus driver and a part, not, was it bus driver, part-time bus driver and a part-time youth services. Youth services because of the dramatic ramp-up in terms of the support we're providing for District 57 and 59, in addition to what we always did, the, 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 no, I'm sorry, it was not bus, it was the, the, for, for youth, adult family counseling, where we, we have a waiting list, and we're, we're just willing to add additional part-time wherever we can, because even if they only do a few hours, it's an advantage for us. So we, last, last, last meeting, we allowed them to continue to look for a part-time and for the youth services to look, to look for a part-time. Today, what I'm looking at is approval for a part-time food pantry employee. As you know, we're well over 1,100 a month now. Kaylee was hired as a manager when we were doing 250, 300 people a month. That has changed dramatically now, and she has over, you know, 40 volunteers, and she has a significant amount of goods that are coming in from Chicago Greater Food Pantry, from Myers, from Walgreens. from Myers, from Walgreens, from just donations, and that all has to be coordinated and sorted and cleaned and stored, plus then they have the hours where they have a lot more people coming through, where they're handling the appointments now, that's been pushed to them. She has a assistant part-time food pantry manager. That person helps her, is here when she's not available, and she's, are not available, when she's, on the nights where she's off, and she fills in for when she's not here, or when she's sick or on vacation, plus she helps manage the food pantry on a day-to-day operations basis. What this part-time person would be looking for is a part-time person who would manage her, manage the volunteers, and would manage the inventory. Basically be able to allow Kaylee and, and our assistant food manager to manage the operations, the day-to-day operations, while she would manage her, manage and coordinate the volunteers, and, and make sure that she's inventorying, all inventory when it comes in, where it's being stored, and how it's being used. We're just getting to a size now where that's becoming important. We just can't take stuff and throw it on shelves, or put pallets over here, or whatever it is. We have a substantial amount of food products that are coming through here, and produce, which is, which is what has spoilage. So I think this would be a very valuable position. Once again, it's part, would be part-time, and other several people have expressed interest in it, that I think would be very good, good for it. So let me start with, is there a motion to approve a part-time food pantry coordinator?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion, any further discussion on that? I know we've, we've moved forward with a couple of part-time people here, and we haven't gone full-time because of the cost involved, and because what we're looking for in most of these part-times is a specific service that doesn't require full-time, where we've got people that are doing the full-time services, but we have a part-time person that can take certain loads off of, off of our full-time people. And I think that's very workable for, very workable for youth services, very workable for the food pantry, and if we move forward with the bus, it sometimes, a part-time bus driver makes sense. It's different for, it's different for adult and family counseling. There, it's difficult to hire a full-time, so we're willing to go with part-time. Most of them are school counselors who want some additional hours, and even if they do three, four hours, or they do seven or eight hours, that allows us to expand our coverage without, without a substantial, without taking on the full responsibility of a, of a full-time person. Okay, if there's no other questions, we get a roll call.
Trustee Narodowski?
Aye.
Trustee Keenley?
Aye.
Trustee May?
Aye.
Trustee Perns?
Aye.
Supervisor Bussey?
Aye.
Okay, item number two under new business is approval to sell small, a small section of land to Elk Grove Village on, in Tunney Road, in the Tunney Road project. Right in front of us, the intersection, right in front of us, there are Tunney and Landmeyer, they are redoing that whole intersection, and in order to do it, they need a small piece of property on our northeast corner. We've met with the village engineer, we've met with the other engineers that have come through here to make sure this isn't something too substantial or too impactful on us. It's a small piece, they're going to pay $7,000, $8,000 for it, and it won't have any major impact on us or our, or our services on the, on the west side of the building. I do feel when they're working on it, we may then have some, that when the intersection's worked on, we may have to work on traffic flow at that point, but for us actually selling this small piece to them, I don't think in the long term it'll impact us in any major way. There, in your package, there's more information on it. I think it's pretty, provides a lot of clarity, so if we get a motion to approve.
Why do we have to sell it?
Because they, in order, in order for them, in order for them to do this, they need that additional space, and they don't, they don't want to lease it, they want to own it.
But I mean, like with, you know, unincorporated, you know, areas of Elk Grove Township, they could just grab it, you know, they could.
Yeah, no, they, what they're doing is they're, they're being nice about it, rather than just, I suppose they could find a way just to take it, but they are offering to buy it from us.
It's fine, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a small piece, it's a small piece of money, but, you know, a little bit helps, and I, so I don't think, at first I was, I was sort of cynical about it, because I didn't see why they had to take property from us to do this, but when I saw their plan, their schematics, and I saw they needed to take a little additional property, they don't want to lease it, we're not going to lease it, I'd rather sell it to them, let them have it, let them do their work, it's not going to impact us, except when they're actually doing the work. So I, I think that it's, it's, it's not, not, not a negative for us in any way. Okay, did we have a, do we have a motion, a motion with a second?
No.
Don't get a second?
We don't have a motion.
Can I get a motion then to approve it?
So moved.
There's a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Like I said, you can see from the pictures where it is, and some of the discussion from the engineer and everything like that. I don't make that, I mean, I don't, I didn't see a big issue with the corner anyway, but they, they want to make it more, they want to make, they want to improve the traffic flow, and they want to make it safer. I'm not an engineer, so I don't, it looked pretty safe to me, but anyway. So there, no further discussion, just not roll call.
Trustee Narodowski?
Aye.
Trustee Keenley?
Aye.
Trustee May?
Aye.
Trustee Perns?
Aye.
Supervisor Bussey?
Aye.
Okay, for, section four, or item four under new business is the 2025-2026 tentative budget for town fund.
You skipped the annual town meeting?
I'm sorry?
We had, we had number.
Oh, you skipped that, okay. Number three, number three under new business is the approval of the 2025 annual town meeting agenda. That's a pretty standard agenda. Only change is that, instead of me just going through the finance, supervise, just reviewing the financials, I'll also be doing, I have a, a package to distribute to any attendees and to the board that we can, that will allow our review of the year, similar to the presentation we did to the Mount Prospect Board, hopefully do their Elk Grove Township, Elk Grove Village Board, it'll be something similar, a little different format. I'm very fortunate in that regard that Izzy, when she was with Hanover, this was one of the projects she did, so I think we're going to have a nice, a nice product. And like I said, it's a very good way of being able to sort of visually and, and I think very professionally show what's, what we've been doing and what the trends are and where we're going. So that would be the, that's the annual town meeting, that will be on April.
April 8th.
April 8th, that's a Tuesday, so make sure that you have that on your agenda, on your schedule, your calendars. Okay, is there a motion to approve the annual town meeting agenda?
So moved. Seconded.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? If not, roll call.
Trustee Narodowski?
Aye.
Trustee Keenley?
Aye.
Trustee May?
Aye.
Trustee Perns?
Aye.
Supervisor Bussey?
Aye.
Okay, now we'll go to number four, which is 2025-26 tentative budget, town fund, general assistance, and the sewer. This is the second review. The only changes to this, whereas we have finalized the assessor salary section of the budget, it's been updated, the last time we had a placeholder, and Connie, and I, and Erica, and Izzy have kind of worked out the, that section, and I think we have now in place, we have now the, not a placeholder, but the actual salary section. Otherwise, it's the same, and, and we're not voting to approve or anything. It will be at the neck, because we, it has to sit on the table for 30 days. The last meeting, when we, when we presented the tentative budget, we needed 30 days since then, and there wasn't 30 days between the meetings, so it will be at the March meeting, that there'll be a hearing prior to it, and then at that meeting, we'll approve the final budget. I don't expect any change, any further changes to this, however, if any, when you go through it, if there's anything that you see that you don't like, or that you think is wrong, or that you feel needs to be further discussed, please let me know, because either we can address it next week at the meeting when we approve it, or I can hold a special meeting, so we get together ahead of time and address any issue. But please go through it now, very carefully, and make sure you're okay with everything. And if you want a copy of last year's budget to compare it against, just ask Izzy and she'll make it available to you. Okay, so that's the, that's the second, that's the second review here today, we don't have to take any action on it. Is there any discussion, people have any questions on that? No? Okay, then under new business number five, we have 25-26 tentative budget, road department second review. As I've discussed before, the road, road department is now under, is the responsibility of the supervisor and the board. This, this road budget reflects our, the work we're doing with, with the, our engineering firm that we have the contract with, and with the company that does the brush pickup and drainage cleanup, and then we only have one IGA now, that's with Elk Grove Village. Mount Prospect now has incorporated all of our, all of our, all of our roads. There are, there are unincorporated roads there, but they're private. All the public unincorporated roads of Mount Prospect are gone, so that IGA has gone away. And this budget now allows us also to be building the reserves there, because as I explained before, we redid all the roads in like half of the areas, of the areas we had, now some of those have been annexed. We have another section, other half, which is not less than what it was, to do, and so we're building up the reserve, so we have adequate reserves to do that and still have a decent reserve for.
To do the sleeving.
Pardon?
Do the sleeving?
Yeah, well, no, that's the sewers. This is, this is, this is the roads. So what we, what we, what we do is every five, six years, we will do half of the roads and upgrade, we do repairs every, every year if they're needed. But every five or six years, or seven, we will go in when we feel it's necessary, we'll redo the roads, usually in about half of the township, and then we'll, another five skiver, we'll do the other. So it's, it's every 10 years on a, on a, on a ladder type basis that we're redoing, totally redoing the roads. In between there are the repairs. And so we're building, we're in the process of still building reserves for that, the next, the next half, half phase. You know, at some point, you know, the roads almost go away, or whatever it is, then, then either, then, like I said, we'll do away with the, the road department levy, and the budget will just wash into the town fund budget, but we still have enough roads where we need, we need to have a levy and a budget for it. So is there any, do I have a motion to, well, no, I don't need that, we're just discussing it. So at the, once again, at the, at the May, at the March meeting, this will be, the hearing will be on this as well, and a final vote on the road, road department budget will take place too. Okay, is there, that's all the new business. Is there any discussion or comments from the trustees? Are there any issues or anything you guys want to address?
No.
I think we had the annual, the annual meeting we discussed, and was there anything else that, was something else, I feel like there's something else that reminds people to just bid in. No, anyway, if, keep an eye too on the calendar, there's a calendar of events you see in the newsletter, the newsletter will be coming out in March, keep an eye on the calendar that's in there, or periodically check with Izzy and, and Mandy, that will let you, make you aware of the different events that we have going on at different times, whether it's flu shots, or whether it's the community services day, or whether it's the DMV day, which will probably be very well attended because of the real ID, is now real, real driver's license is now real. So, you know, those are things to be aware of, and your presence at those is usually is beneficial, it's helpful to kind of see how those events are done, as well as to intermingle with some of our constituents, and just take a look at the, check the calendar out periodically. Okay, if there's nothing else, no other comments from the trustees, or the assessor, or the clerk?
I'm good.
Okay, the next meeting will be, like I said, in March. I may not be here. If I'm not, I'd like Dick to chair the meeting. And then the next meeting after that will be the annual meeting, and then the April meeting, and then the swearing-in for the board will be May 19th, before the May meeting. Okay? All right, if there's nothing else, then do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Seconded.
Okay, it's moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, or adjourned?